Hi Ricky.
Good evening and welcome. Fall River Community Media is pleased to host tonight's forum featuring the candidates running for Fall River City Council. My name is Keith Tebow, Director of FRC Media, and I'll be serving as the moderator for tonight's forum. We're holding two City Council forums tonight. The second forum will take place at 8:00 this evening, so we hope you can join us at that time. All candidates were invited to participate in today's forums, and the makeup of our two panels were determined by draw. The candidates with us for the first panel are, in alphabetical order, Michelle Deion, Brad Kilby, Linda Pereira, Gloria Sadler, Alexander Silva, Jordan James Sylvia, Joshua Tixera, and Ricky Tith. Thank you all for coming tonight. Laura Washington was also invited to attend this evening, but she's off celebrating her honeymoon and could not join us tonight. Also joining us tonight is a panel of individuals who will be asking questions of our candidates this evening. They are Michael Sylvia from the Fall River Reporter, Pamela Martin from Fall River Government Television, and Ray Haig, former City Councilor and fill-in talk show host at WSAR Radio. Thank you for joining us tonight. The format of tonight's forum is as follows. Our forum will last 90 minutes. There will be no opening statement, but each candidate will be allowed to deliver a 90-second closing statement. Each candidate will answer every question posed by our panelists tonight, and will have 90 seconds to do so. There will be no rebuttals. Prior to each question, we'll randomly draw a candidate's name, and that candidate will respond to the question first. We'll then work our way around, going to the right, and then loop back around if necessary, so all candidates will answer the question. Candidates will only be asked to answer a question first once. In the event that all candidates are able to answer a question first before we're done, we will make another drawing, but those who were not selected to answer a question first, one of those will be drawn to present their closing statement first. All right, we're ready to start. With our first question tonight, it will be asked by Michael Sylvia from the Fall River Reporter, and it will be addressed first to Gloria Sadler.
There were three shootings this past weekend in Fall River. Many of the shootings were among teens. More police, this year, were among teens. More policing seems to be a common response by politicians, but that usually is only a short-term fix, and does little to take on the root causes of gangs and youth violence. What do you consider the root cause of youth crime in Fall River, and what can the City Council do to address the issue?
Sadler, 90 seconds.
What I consider to be the root cause of youth violence within the city of Fall River, I would say the inability for our city to really reach out and provide other opportunities beyond hanging on street corners for our youth.
And what could the City Council do to address that?
What the City Councilors can do? I don't have a specific answer for City Councilors and youth violence. That's more of a police question.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Silva?
Hi. So I think a big part of it is getting more community engagement amongst our student population, getting them more involved in the community. Something I think the City Council could do is further support extracurricular activities. I know when I was in high school, I was in technical theater, and it was a huge part of my education. I consider it as equally as important to the academic side of schooling. But overall, I think what the city can do to kind of help engage our youth is just kind of promote upward mobility among the entire population to elevate the whole community. You know, anyone struggling with poverty, a lot of that kind of ties in with crime, unfortunately. And I think one way to approach that is kind of eliminating the desire for anyone to want to commit crime. So if people are living happy lives, I think that is the best way to prevent the crime.
Thank you. Mr. Sylvia?
Thanks for the question, Mike. Just briefly, one thing is, if you're asking what's going to improve the public safety in Fall River, nothing is going to change in Fall River until the city, people, politicians, people start to really care, right? The local media, when they start taking this process seriously, there's 90 minutes, there's nine people here, 10 minutes, nothing's going to get solved in 10 minutes, right? So first off, you're not going to get concrete answers here until people in the city start demanding actual answers, right? We settle for, we settle for all the crime in Fall River, right? Further support the youth, I agree with what he just said as far as crime rises with the economy declining, right? And Fall River is impoverished. It's not a police thing. As a former police officer, I'm the only person running who's responded to 911 calls, right? Former FRPD, worked in Brockton Police, I know about crime. Crime is not prevented by police. All, I see all these politicians, first off, they lie. First off, they lie about the problem. They say, "I heard Linda say this week, crime is improving." "I heard Joe Kamara say the same thing, it's been better, it's been worse." Paul Coogan, crime. You need people who are going to be serious about what's going on, not sugarcoat the problem, lie about it. They're lying about it for their own political careers, so let's be serious about what it is. We need to fix the schools. We need to do, we do need to bring up the quality of life in Fall River. Has nothing to do with police. I asked the police, they didn't say add more police, they said, they were talking about liberal judges and whatnot.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Mr. Tixera?
Yes. I think one of the issues is, I'd like to see more schools discussing the issue of repercussions of these serious crimes. I think a lot of them don't realize what they're getting themselves into once they're caught and putting their life away. I believe that they should have more, more sources in the school level as well as in the home levels. A lot of the issues here we're having is a lot of single-parent families, their aunts, uncles, grandparents taking care of them, so they're not getting the real role models, and they're out more on their own time, not being watched. And a lot of it has to do with today's society, with these crazy video games and life itself. But I firmly believe a lot of them don't realize what the consequences are. It just takes a second to pull the trigger, and then their life is over. So if we got more knowledge of them knowing what can happen to their future, I think that would help a lot in the, in the city itself.
Thank you. Mr. Tith?
I am, what I would like, I would like to do if elected, I would like to work with the school department and with the police department, come up with an action plan. Because nowadays, it's, it's all the trend about hip-hop. And back in the days, like in the 90s, we're sort of worst gang, but now all the gang is gone. But I feel that city is, we have lack of a lot of, a lot of plans of role models, and especially right into the school or into an organization that is like nonprofit and stuff. So I'd like to sit down together and create an action plan, you know? What can we do to help them? And especially like creating an ambassador for each individual from north and south, and to have them to involve, get involved with, with, with the action plan, and then also, you know, that way you try to encourage them to come out from after-school program and stuff.
Thank you. Ms. Deion?
I believe that gang activity and hierarchies have morphed over the years. A lot of the activity is drug-related. Because drug activity and selling is so profitable, that it actually has become a family business, where you see generational gang members. You have parents and children involved in the same gangs today, which we never saw many years ago. I think the only way we can approach it is that we need more boots on the ground, more community policing, more police presence. Because if you have police presence, they tend to not be in that area so much. I think in terms of us being a City Councilor, we can vote in support for funding for additional boots on the ground, to have the police presence in the community. It's obviously definitely something that does need to be addressed. But I think until we can break the cycle, until, again, it's generational issues, it came up recently, and until we can break that cycle, I think it's going to be very difficult to, to get a handle on it. Thank you.
It's Kilby.
Yes, thank you. Very difficult issue, of course. I mean, you read the papers and you see 18-year-olds dying. It saddens everyone on this committee. If you're a politician, you're not, obviously, we're politicians because we're running for office, okay? So we're politicians here. And we all care, absolutely care. So I did some bullet points based on that question. Drugs, changing opinions, parenting, huge issue in terms of parents keeping an eye on their kids, making sure they, as best they can, making sure they do the right thing, keeping them off the computers as much as you can, stopping crime, adults setting examples for kids, right? Basic. And, you know, more practically, the question was whether, what the City Council can do. I sponsored a resolution many years ago about creating substations. To speak about, Councilor Haig remembers this, if you want neighborhood policing, create some substations within high-crime areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pereira?
Hi, I was at a meeting last night at Father Kelly Neighborhood, and the Chief of Police was there, talking about all the statistics that we have. And given what the city of Fall River is doing in other cities, there is a difference. And I have it here, and I can leave it, and I can show you, and these are the differences in what Fall River was 2013 to what it is now. What the City Council can do is provide more police, and we've done that. We just put on 18 police officers, so we're up to 211. I'd like to see two-man cruises, because one police officer getting to a scene has to wait, even if it's a domestic, they have to wait for another officer to get there. I put together the Committee on Health and Human Services and Youth, because I think that there needs to be a committee to talk about that. We've done things, I've done things with, you know, Winter Wonderland or Halloween Party, you try to do things to get the youth involved, and we got kids involved. Before, the churches had dances. Every week, there was a dance at some church. That's gone. I'm trying to save the armory, because I believe that that should be a place where kids can go. And then you've got to look at transportation. How can kids get there from different parts of the city? I tried to do that before, and I couldn't get surta to get a bus to pick up kids from Durfee when they got out of school to get there. So there's a lot that can be done, but to think that we're not doing anything, or we don't care about youth as a city in a whole, we certainly do. Thank you. This is not a debate.
Sorry, no, no back and forth. No, no back and forth, no rebuttals. No rebuttals tonight, thank you. Our next question will be asked by Pamela Martin, and will be addressed first to, if I can get this open, Jordan Sylvia.
All right, thanks for being here, everyone. Governor Healey today said that shelter for migrants and homeless is not guaranteed by the end of this month. Massachusetts, as we know, is one of 11 sanctuary cities, states, excuse me. How many migrants are currently sheltered in Fall River? Where are they being housed? We've seen all the rumors, we've seen the accusations, and I'm sure many very inaccurate statements being made. So what can you tell people, Fall River's residents, about the migrant status here, and what will you see happening in the coming months?
Sylvia?
Governor Healey, this to me, right? Governor Healey, I don't think does anything for Fall River in a positive way. Of course, they'll warehouse foreigners, poverty, you know, they've been doing that for 100 years in Fall River. Respectfully, I'm not a politician, because I'm running for office. I'm not taking money if I get this job. I've never raised a penny in the 10 years I've been running for office, so I'm not a politician. Math, before we talk about migrants, like math, there's 90,000 people in Fall River, there's maybe 12 cops on at a time, so do the math. Politicians have been saying for 30 years, "Oh, we need more police, we need more, we need more police and fire and teachers." None of that's going to work. This woman just brought statistics here that said crime is improving in Fall River. It was bad timing at those three shootings this past weekend. Again, you want, you want another 30 years, I've been saying this for a long time, you want another 30 years of people saying crime is good while you're seeing shots fired in your neighborhood? Vote for Linda and Joe and all these other people. They'll lie to keep their jobs. As far as migrants, another liar, Paul Coogan says crime is down too. There's a Herald News article saying there's 71 migrants in Fall River. WSAR has them saying, "Oh, they say, they're saying there's 71, but I haven't seen them." I just honestly, I can't stand any person who is, who is a politician in Fall River. The mayor, the City Council, the school committee, we need to get rid of all these people and start fresh. I'm one of the people I think will do a phenomenal job, because I don't lie, I don't care about this job, right? I want to solve problems. People say I'm Mr. Negativity, I welcome that. I welcome that. I'm the chief critic.
Thank you. Ms. Tixera?
Yeah, Pamela, could you repeat that question again one more time, please?
Sure. So this morning, Governor Healey today, this morning, said that shelter for migrants and homeless is not guaranteed by the end of this month in our state. Massachusetts is one of 11 sanctuary states. So we're asking, how many migrants do you know of that are sheltered here in Fall River? Obviously directed perhaps more to the incumbents, thank you. Where are they being housed? We've seen the rumors, we've seen the accusations, and I'm sure many of these statements that are being made are really inaccurate or wrong. What can you tell people about Fall River's migrant status, and what do you see happening in the coming months?
So that question, I'm not sure how many are here in the city, to be honest.
Right.
But, yeah, yeah, but I'd like to see us take care of our people first. Our people that are homeless, our people with the drug issues prior to taking in migrants. That's how my take is. These people actually put in time, their money, they worked at one point, so I think we should be taking care of them first before the migrants come with that. That's all I have to say with that.
Thank you. Mr. Tith?
Well, I mean, it's a number that is a miss, so we cannot actually, what to expect or what's our plan are until they come in front of us. But my, my take is, like, we always need to help the people in our city first, just like everywhere, even, you know, you have to take care of your home first before you go out to, to all the, all the people who help them and support. But if they come in and they have a number and they need support, I definitely going to help, have given them a helping hand.
Thank you. Ms. Deion?
Yeah, I believe that Governor Healey made that statement because she realizes that the funding for it is running out. There is a saturation level. 145,000 immigrant families came into this country in the month of August alone. The Herald News wrote an article stating we have 71 migrant families living in the only hotel we have in the city of Fall River. This requires funding for housing, food, medical, and education. We have an extremely low per capita income level in Fall River, and in a cash-strapped city, we cannot afford any more than we're already providing. Fall River has been home to and extended its arms to numerous, numerous families and individuals over the years, and I believe we are at our saturation level. And we, you know, you can't wait until your economy collapses. And I believe that the right-to-shelter law, though it's good for them, is not good for the local encampments and the homeless people, because the right-to-shelter law is for families, not for individuals. And I agree with Mr. Tith that we do need to also, and first, take care of our own.
Thank you. Mr. Kilby?
Well, I consider these people refugees. My friend, Mr. Tith, probably is an expert on that issue. And we, we need to provide a safe haven for people. I mean, can you imagine how desperate you are when you just pick up your family and your children and just flee? How impoverished and desperate you must be? So it's a federal nationwide issue, and it's hitting Massachusetts. And once again, can you imagine what the, the southern states, Arizona and Texas, and, you know, what, what's happening there? It's a humanitarian crisis. And I heard Governor Healey saying that she is going to open up the career centers, I heard her today on WSAR, and to try to get some opportunities for these people who want to be employed. So it's, I'm repeating it three or four times, but it's a humanitarian crisis, and as a person who cares for people, I think we have to do all we can to provide for these people who are fleeing in desperation.
Thank you. Ms. Pereira?
I agree with Councilor Kilby that it's heartbreaking to see families coming across the border and not having a place to go, or ripping children away from their parents. I think this is a federal problem. And what Governor Healey said today was that the federal government needs to give money to the states if they expect the states to provide the care necessary for immigrant individuals that are coming. I personally think that going back to Kennedy, when Kennedy was president, you came into this country because you had a sponsor, and that sponsor brought you into this country, you had to have a job. That sponsor provided for your medical, the roof over your head, the food in your stomach, the clothes on your back, and they did that for five years. And that gave you the opportunity to then get a job, be successful, get an apartment, and I can think of many people in Fall River that that happened to. If you look at Fall River, I can speak to the Portuguese community, because I was involved in that, but if you look at Davis Street, Tremont Street, Plain Street, those are all people from Agua Torta. If you go down in Columbia Street, the Moose State Ants Club, those were people from the Moose States. New Bedford was people from Madera, because their family members would bring people over, but you'd support them. These people come and they have no support from anybody, and we can't afford it if we can't help our own. So, but it is heartbreaking. I wish I had the answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sadler?
Hi. So while it is a humanitarian issue, it is heartbreaking. My concerns are always for, America needs to take care of its own first. For me, it's very critical that we take care of our own first. With regards to shelter not being guaranteed, if it's an American citizen, if it's a Massachusetts citizen, I'm open for discussion. But to bring individuals from out of the country or who have fled their country and entered into ours, we should not have that responsibility to guarantee them shelter. We have people right now living in encampments that were born and raised within this country. So how dare we guarantee the right to shelter to immigrants and not guarantee shelter to our own?
Thank you. Mr. Silva?
Hi. So I also read that today, I read today that the emergency shelter decree could be ending within the, by the end of the month. My understanding of the total number of migrants in the city is that it's limited to the number of hotels available in Fall River. I agree mostly with what everybody has said, you can't, I don't think you can help others if you can't at first help yourself, and I think everyone can agree there's plenty in Fall River that still need a lot of help. As a gateway city, Fall River, you know, it's foundationally built upon immigrants, it's built by immigrants, so I think it's very understandable that a lot of people in Fall River are upset that some people are, you know, kind of getting into the country through not the legal means, when a lot of people went through that long process, and they might have been going through just as awful circumstances, but they did it the right way. So I'll just echo everyone else's comments.
Thank you. Ray Haig has our next question, and it will be addressed to Brad Kilby first.
By this time in the election process, you must have some understanding of the city's operating budget, at least the incumbent should. With that said, name one line item you would like to increase, and one line item you would like to decrease.
You saved the most difficult question, right, for me? Public safety, increase. Education, as much as within my purview as a counselor, increase. So that'd be the, did you, it was one or two?
Two.
Two. Decrease? Gosh, that's equally challenging. That's even more challenging than the first, because I think the budget is tight, we're at bare bones. I can't say public, I can't say public works, I can't say, of course, police, I can't say education. But I'm going to answer the question as best I can. Legal, the legal department. I think at this point in time, the legal department is getting an abundance of money. We hire outside contractors to do a lot of our work. It's a small part of the budget, but I'm doing my best to answer the question, so. And I'll stand by that one. Thank you.
You've answered it, Counselor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pereira?
Well, I'm going to tell you, there's a lot of places I'd increase the budget, because we certainly need more people working in the city, doing jobs. Let me give you some example. Facilities Department has three employees, a carpenter, a working foreman, and a painter. We don't have an electrician, and we don't have a plumber, we have the paint, we don't have that, because a plumber and an electrician are not going to come in at the rate of pay that we have. DCM, 35 laborers, and that includes dispatchers, street sweepers, CDL drivers, mechanics, and they're out there with weeds, overbrush, graffiti, everything else. You know, even in the winter, when you have people with CDL drivers to do the plows, and $23.50 an hour we pay. Go out, because contractors, because of all that upper money, they're paying people $30, $35 an hour. The water department, nine laborers, backhoe operator, one engineer, one GIS, one mechanic. So how many people does that leave on the street? Tree department, two people. Cemetery workers, five, when they have five cemeteries to cut. You mow your lawn every week in the summertime, so there's not a lot to cut from. That's the bare bones that we're dealing with. I would agree that we have to look at legal, because I think they spend too much money without out-of-pocket attorneys. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sadler?
I do echo Brad. Police and education should be increased. My thoughts with regards to a decrease would be the water department. Until I can have a firm explanation on that rainwater fee that I don't have for any of my other properties, I think we need to decrease the water department. My second, I would echo the legal department as being one of the other departments that I would like to see budget decreased.
Thank you. Mr. Silva?
Thanks. So rather than answering in a more general sense, I'll be more specific. I would unfund any positions that have been unfilled for long lengths of period, and shift that funding over to necessary positions. And I would fund a maintenance budget for each of the facilities in Fall River, even if it's just starting to put away $1,000 for each of them a year. It'll be more of a maintenance fund for the buildings than we have now, and it will help head off potential problems that we've seen with so many old facilities and so many worries that we have for new facilities like the new Durfee and upcoming Diamond.
Thank you. Mr. Sylvia?
I believe, just going by memory, some of those meetings, they said the person who replaced Mary Sahadi is supposedly that department's like three, they were paying like twice or three times what she was making or whatever, because they're going outside contract. The answer is, the country is horrifically bankrupt already, $33.5 trillion in debt, right? So let's talk about a specific department, right? So we have the school department, 2019 was, was doing $149 million, five years later, it's $226 million. That's $77 million more every year going forward, it's going to increase every year. And we get worse results in the MCAS, because these people closed the schools based on, you know, COVID myths, government edict passed down from, again, corrupt federal politicians, the state, everyone just lockstep, shut down all the schools. The answer is, we need to cut every, every, every department in the city of Fall River, right? So I'm the only person who's, who's made a pledge that I'm going to not vote to increase anything, because again, I wrote this in the Herald News, these people all want to, you're a veteran, right, Ray? They, they say, "Oh yeah, we love the veterans." When they're saying, "We're going to, we need to spend more money on everything," right? You just heard it, we need to spend more on anything. They get no results from any increased spending, and it kills poor people, people who've owned their homes for 30, 40 years, veterans, right? They go to the parades, they put their hands up, and then people get crushed and have to sell their houses. That's what's happening. Spending money by the government is the problem, not the solution. They're all 180 degrees wrong in the wrong direction. That's what needs to happen. Spend less money.
Thank you. Ms. Tixera?
Yes, I'd like to see an increase in public safety. Safe city is a prosperous city. People want to come, spend money, live here, buy, buy homes and spend their time here. Decrease, for me, I think a lot of the decreases are, I think, a lot of these department heads, they're getting these large raises who don't even live in this city, okay? That's a big problem. You've got, like they stated, the water department with the low salaries, you've got the guys in the ground outside at 32 degrees, sometimes 20, raining and snow, making their $21 an hour, while they have department heads making $120, $130,000 in a warm office. Okay, so I think the decreases, there should be a cap at these department heads, not just keep filling it up and as much as they want and increase. So that's where I think they should have decreases.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Tiff.
Well, may I like to decrease, I mean, increase public safety and education. And then after that, decrease on certain department, once I'm elected, once I review all the budget and look at where the budget go and who's getting paid and how they're spending to make sure it's all balanced and checked.
Thank you. Ms. Dionne.
So in terms of if we had the money and if we could do it, my increase, I would like to see the people who work for the city, the clerks, the low-level employees, and I'm not saying that negatively as opposed to a department head. We have individuals who've worked for the city for 15, 20, 25 years. They don't even get paid enough money to be able to afford their living expenses. Many of them qualify for food stamps. And it's a shame that a city doesn't pay their employees at least enough to survive in this world. So if there could be an increase, that would be the increase I would like to see. In terms of a decrease, in the FY '24 budget, we had $2 million budgeted for vacant positions. $2 million. And most of those positions are not going to be filled. So to say there's no money in the budget to put somewhere else or to decrease the budget by, I say that's wrong. We're not going to spend that $2 million on funded vacant positions. As far as public safety, I agree. We have put money into public safety. In this FY '24 budget, the police and EMS did get significant raises. So the city council already increased their pay and gave them the extra funding. I, again, would fight for the employee who can't afford to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Silva is back up from Fall River reporter with our next question, and it will be answered first by Michelle Dionne.
The average rent in Fall River is $1,400 for a 900-square-foot apartment. Do you support rent control? If yes, please explain why. If not, explain what the city council can do to lower rents in Fall River.
I think rent control is a very difficult issue. I don't know if it's something that you can even, that's something that you can demand. You know, people are buying multifamilies at incredible prices. I recently spoke with a real estate person, her friend sold a six-family for $760,000. If you're paying $700,000, I get the landlord can't afford to rent at the rates that people are accustomed to in the city. However, do I think that we can do something to create affordable housing? Yes. That's a whole separate issue. And you're right. We have people who have supported this city their entire lives, people who worked to pay off their homes thinking they'd be safe and secure for the rest of their lives, who are ending up in the street, who have to sell their homes and can no longer stay in the city of Fall River. Do we need to address that and help them? We most certainly do. But there is absolutely no reason, when New Bedford could make, take steps and strides for affordable housing, there's no reason the city of Fall River can't do it as well. Again, here we go, leaving our own behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kilby.
Yes. I agree with Michelle, Council Dionne, on a point that for me to answer yes or no to rent control right now is kind of almost impossible for me to answer. Because I know, obviously, I know what it is. It would take a great deal of thought. Forgive me if I'm wrong, I might be wrong, but maybe another individual can correct me. I think Boston might have it still. But there's issues with the constitutionality of it. So I really can't commit up to a yes or no at this point. And I apologize for that. I try to commit to my answers. Number two, the second thing I'd like to say is, I had a client come to my office from East Providence, and he was going over what the rents are in East Providence and Providence, a two-bedroom, $2,400 a month for a two-bedroom apartment. So Fall River is still, believe it or not, somewhat affordable with two incomes making $50,000 a year. Other than that, it's difficult and it's going to get a lot, a lot worse. Affordable housing, it's ironic that we were fighting affordable housing 20 years ago, saying it's a bad thing, we got to get rid of it, we got to tear it down. And now we're talking about increasing affordable housing. So I think I was one of the minority of elected officials that wanted to hold back on, you know, getting rid of all of affordable housing.
Thank you.
So I think it should be increased.
Thank you. Ms. Pereira.
I think rent control is difficult, and the primary reason is that if somebody is buying a home, as Council Dionne stated, you're buying a three-family home or a six-family home for $400, $500, you know, $700,000, then you have to have increased the rents to pay for the mortgage. That's just, that's life. And that's what it is. Nobody's going to buy a house and not be able to make the money to pay their mortgage. But some of the things, and I put in a resolution about this specifically, about the increases, to look at, a lot of our veterans don't know what their veterans' benefits are. If you're 100% disabled, they don't know what benefits they can receive for housing. The average person doesn't know. If you're over 70, or 70 or above, if you're a widow, there's a disability, there are exemptions. And I think that we need to let the community know what these exemptions are. We even looked at a tax work program so that if a senior wanted to do 100 hours within the course of a year, and that could be sitting at one of the bathrooms at Heritage State Park and sit there for two hours, and they would be paid for doing that. So then this came about, well, if they get paid, then that shows income to them, and it could disqualify them from other benefits. But isn't there a way to just make that money go right to the city? There's got to be a way to help. The ones that really affect me are the senior citizens, because they've worked their entire lives. And to all of a sudden be thrown out of an apartment that they were paying $650 for is tough.
Thank you.
With that, I stop. Thank you.
Ms. Adler.
With regards to rent control, I can recall when rent control went into effect in Massachusetts. It affected me. I lived in the city of Boston. I house-hopped, literally. My family, all my children owned their own homes. I have to say, as a property owner, I would not vote for rent control. I can honestly say that, even though I've lived through the effects of rent control. But as a property owner, I understand what that would mean for me. It would limit my ability to pay my mortgages. What I do see as a solution, and I'll be quick, is the funds that Mike Dionne's office is offering for individuals as first-time homebuyer, down payments, repairing your property, or whatever the case may be, out of Mike Dionne's office. The way I see this is, property owners who are selling, and my neighbor sold his six-family generation home for $200,000, those funds should be allocated from the CDC's office or whatever, CDM's office from Mike Dionne. Those funds should be allocated to longstanding homeowners. Do not sell your property for five to 10 years, and we will update your property. And we will update your property. You will be exempt from tax increases. This puts homeowners, longstanding homeowners, at a ball-court advantage to play with the new, newly established units.
Thank you. Mr. Silva.
Hi. So with rent control on the Massachusetts ballot, I think it'll ultimately be an issue for the voters to decide. Kind of looking at Fall River, though, specifically, I think it would be difficult to enact in Fall River. You look at a lot of the existing housing stock in Fall River already, it is, and the condition isn't great. I kind of worry what condition they would end up in if you're kind of limiting the property owner's rents. In terms of supporting, you know, residents now, there are ways we can support the most vulnerable. I'm a member of the Community Preservation Committee, and there's a designated category for community housing, that funds can be actually used for rental assistance. If there was an application for a grant for that, it could be matched with ARPA funds, and that could be given out to, you know, the most vulnerable members of the community, like veterans or the elderly. In terms of affordable housing, Fall River at one time historically had a population of 120,000. So, I mean, the housing stock is still there. I think a good way to kind of help the affordable housing crisis is maintaining the 28% affordable rate of housing inventory that you're often hearing nowadays as Fall River's population grows again. So rather than limiting it to Massachusetts General law 40B requirements of 10% affordable housing, we can maybe match the existing housing inventory of 30% and, you know, try and use that as a benchmark and a goal for new developments. We've lost a lot of old historic buildings, I'll say, in the city that could have been redeveloped and do housing needs.
Thank you. Mr. Silva.
So the question was affordable housing, right? Obviously, no rent control. This isn't the Soviet Union, Communist China. Unfortunately, our schools are churning out kids, right, who become young adults, and they say housing is a right, it should be free. So they have no understanding. That's what the conversation is in Fall River. You see all the Facebook comments, right, Mike, greedy landlords, right? No, there's financial realities. Why is rent unaffordable for people? Everything you just heard, right, and this whole debate is we need to spend more money, the government needs to spend more money. His M1 money supply has doubled, right, since 2019 over the COVID scam. So Chris, Cliff Parson said the other day that it's a supply problem. That's not true. If rent doubles and triples, it's not because the housing supply decreased in half or by, you know, two-thirds. It's because it's a demand issue. They keep creating all this money because politicians keep spending it, whether it's on crazy foreign wars. I was sent to Iraq, right, over a lie. There's trillions of dollars going overseas. We're seeing it right now again with the Middle East and the Ukraine stuff. Where's Jake Arkin Claus? The politicians are causing the affordable problem. I'm the only person, I think, I grew up in Maple Gardens, right? I lived in affordable housing. I've been saying this. People ask for affordable housing, right? You were right, Brad. I thought we were fighting against affordable housing. I've lived in the projects. You don't want to live in affordable housing, right? I spent my whole life to not live in affordable housing.
Thank you. Mr. Tiff.
So yes, rent control, that wouldn't work out with, how do you tell someone to, who paid $700,000 at 8% interest on what they can charge? That's one of the big issues. So what I would like to do is to help that is, you know, make people aware of the programs we have in the city, Citizens for Citizens with the fuel assistance, electrical assistance, especially for the elderly, because a lot of people don't really know that that exists. Or make it a little bit more public so that they can get the help they need. That's what we need to make sure everybody knows, that we have certain programs that can help people so they're not down and out. So that's what I'd like to see. But the rent control is a no, not for me.
Thank you. Mr. Tiff.
Well, in terms of rent control, it's like you, it's like a check and balance. One for investors, like you tone the investor not to come in Fall River because you've got to put this rent control in there. And then another one is for the people to move out and then to be the next homeless because they cannot afford affordable rent every month because they have a minimum wage. So what I would like to have to see is to get a special permit, if there's folks, people that have a resident family, that have a three-parent family, that have a big lot, you know, they could have built a house there, and then make a policy, say you cannot make any more rent to $1,200 or something, it's just like maybe $800 to $900, depending on your income. And also, like, going for like citizens and stuff, we have a lot of nonprofit that helping with heat, assisting heating, assisting with light and stuff. But I feel that there is not much promotion going out, like language, English.
Thank you. Pam Martin has our next question, and it will be answered first by Riki Tiff.
All right, we're kind of staying in the same subject here. I want to ask about the city taxes. Would you go to the proposition two-and-a-half cap each year, as has pretty much been done regularly by council body in recent years? By going to that full two-and-a-half cap plus the valuation property increases which have occurred over the last few years, taxes have in some cases for people tripled.
Well, as a homeowner and a business owner, I would not put any higher taxes already because we already have a lot of high taxes burden on our shoulders and stuff. And, you know, we just have to find ways to lower the tax down or at least give the folks a tax break for like maybe every once a year and stuff, you know, that just, I think.
Thank you. Ms. Dionne.
I just want to backtrack for one second on the affordable housing issue, because I think people confuse low-income housing and affordable housing. They're two separate things. We have three levels of housing: market rate, affordable, and low. I was talking about affordable, not low-income housing. With that, on the two-and-a-half percent, I believe property owners, for the most part, anticipate they're going to pay two-and-a-half percent more. People realize you have to support where you live. I do have a problem with assessments coming in after the fact. And then the assessments increase it above the two-and-a-half percent. I think that's where a lot of the problem comes in. And I think those type of things are what make the target unattainable and push the people out of the point where they can afford their homes anymore. I think we should stay within the two-and-a-half percent, that it should never go over that. People, their quarterly bills should not increase by $50 to $200 per quarter. That is just generally wrong. And that would be my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kilby.
Yes, I agree with Council Dionne. Absolutely would support two-and-a-half increases. If you remember, when two-and-a-half proposition, two-and-a-half was first passed, it was to put a cap on taxes to not give a shock to homeowners. And that would be, that's the minimum that we can accomplish or we can raise. Sometimes I don't like throwing out figures, but I believe it might be maybe $5 million per year for a two-and-a-half percent increase. So the answer to the question is yes. In terms of, the first question that we received is, what line items would you like to see increased? I'll tell you right now, if we do not raise by two-and-a-half percent, you're not going to see increases in public safety, you're not going to see increases in education, you're not going to see increases in anything. So you get what you pay for. Finally, on that topic, and it's related, is new growth. And I hope we get a question on new growth. If not, I don't know if you all listened to Prismium, potentially the town of Somerset may turn this down. And there's work behind the scenes to try to land this. And it would mean $9 million a year in revenue to the city if we were able to land that. So I don't want to tip my hat to Somerset and say, you better approve this, because if they don't, I think we're prepared to take them.
Thank you. Ms. Pereira.
Well, I got to tell you, many, many years ago, when Proposition Two-and-a-Half came on the ballot, I was Regional Vice President of Fair Share, which Fair Share was the one that put the ballot initiative out there to cap it at two-and-a-half percent. I look at our taxes at $12,27 a thousand, where New Bedford is $14,29 a thousand. Our taxes are still lower than our neighboring communities. But as in your own home, electric bills have skyrocketed. I don't know, they put on all these additions, all these other fees on your electric bill, which it's not even the representatives that do it, it's the, you know, Public Utilities Commission. Well, I don't know who the hell puts them there, but to be honest with you, that, you see how that increases. And the city is the same thing. Things increase every year. We would definitely not go over two-and-a-half percent because we can't go over two-and-a-half percent. And the way that the bills come out, and Ray, you know, the second and third quarter, when you get your last bills, it's accumulated from what the year before was. So you get banged at the end. It should be divided out evenly throughout the entire year. But we need the money to provide the services, and Brad's right. You will not end up putting increases to anything. And you need to provide the services to the public. It doesn't come for free.
Thank you.
That's my feelings on it.
Thank you. Ms. Adler.
I am not in favor of a two-and-a-half proposition. What I am in favor of is consideration of alternate years, alternate increases. The same way, I know with unions, there are incremental increases. Well, with regards to homeowners' property taxes, there should be alternate-year opportunities versus the annual.
Thank you. Mr. Silva.
I wouldn't commit to anything without seeing that specific year's budget, but I think the goal of every city councillor should be to try and minimize the tax burden on residents. The best way to do this is generally to increase the commercial tax base if you're trying to provide relief to residential property owners. I think with the Route 79, Deval Street Corridor project, that it is the perfect opportunity to try and maximize the commercial business growth in the city. to try and maximize the commercial business growth in the city in the best way possible, and that would ultimately lead to more revenue and perhaps a stabilization of the 2.5% rate.
Thank you. Mr. Sylvia.
So the question is, would I raise taxes 2.5%? So I believe I'm the only person running who said I will not raise taxes even the 2.5%, right? There's been overrides for Derfie, so they've had to spend hundreds of million dollars over the 2.5%. Everyone who just spoke before me, the incumbents, just said they're going to raise your taxes. They said they will raise it to the 2.5%. That's a guarantee. They say basically we have to do that to pay for all the services and whatever. The talk about we bring in the Wind Project, we'll bring in a potential, don't listen to anything a politician says like two weeks before an election, right? If we took in $9 million more in Fall River, we would spend $10 million more, okay? I know poor doctors because they make $400,000 a year and they spend $450,000, right? That's the problem, is the spending. It's easy to say, oh, I won't raise taxes, right? I've heard George Bush say that. It's another thing to stand there in those meetings and as the parade of department heads and all the social media, unions and everybody are screaming. I do hear from poor people in the city, they bought their house 50 years ago, they can't afford the taxes now, they didn't even have a mortgage. I am the person who will not, who will hold the line on that. If you really care about not raising taxes, 2.5%, your housing value doubles, right? Your house goes from worth $250,000 to $500,000 in five years, your tax bill doubles. So they play games with everything. I'm the only person looking out for actual taxpayers in this city who is running. That's a guaranteed fact.
Thank you. Mr. Texera.
Yes, I would definitely look into that increase of not really happening until you see you get your value worth. You know, you hear people saying before he ran here, trying to run, is what's your money going towards? And you're seeing roads are terrible, education systems are failing, safety is down, what is exactly your money going to? So until you can show that to the people, that it's actually working and money going to the right way to show people improvements, then that's a different story with that. So that's what I would do with that.
Thank you. Ray Haig has our next question for the candidates, and it will be directed first to Alexander Silva.
We hear every day from ordinary citizens that Fall River does have a housing crisis, and we hear from other citizens that say there is a looming housing crisis with the train coming. What do you all think is more important for our city right now? Building new homes and commercial space, or rehabbing, expanding, and better utilizing our existing inventory?
That's a question. I personally don't see why we can't do both, especially with the waterfront project that's opening up new land, so there's nothing to rehab there. So I think that's a perfect opportunity for new growth. But I absolutely agree that it is paramount to rehab older structures. I mentioned previously that Fall River's population was once 120,000, so the inventory is there. I mean, you could drive around the city and see a lot of decrepit houses that might not even be occupied, and, you know, we're in a housing crisis, so I think there could be a very concerted effort to rehab those properties, put affordable deed restrictions on them, you know, get them up to code if they're existing, provide financial incentives for homeowners to make everyone have a respectable place to live. I'm on the Board of Directors of the Preservation Society of Fall River. We currently have been working with the Mayor Coogan's administration as a community housing development organization to create affordable housing in the city. We have created three units affordable deed restricted, and we're in the process of creating four more, so it's something I know how to do.
Thank you. Mr. Sylvia.
Yeah, I don't think the government should, especially the community preservation should be involved in housing at all. We have too much corruption in city government, right, when it comes to the buildings. You heard about the Heber. Everyone here is going to say we should have new development and rehab the existing stock, first off, that's the answer. But then we also have politicians right here tonight who are voting to sell buildings for two schools for 15 grand, they turned around and put on the market for 900,000. I want to see a police, a law enforcement investigation into what happened there. The person who bought those was Jay-Z Correa's co-conspirator, right? City Council President, his brother was a co-conspirator, they were getting city jobs. So I will be the person on the city council who will bring all these things to light. No one will question that about me, right? That's all I've done for 10 years, right? Is criticize everything, all the corruption, all the incompetence. That's what I want to go there to do. I'm not looking for pay. I don't think any city councillor deserves a pay, a salary, any sort of benefits. Same thing with the school committee. They're spending $77 million more, we get worse results, and they're asking for a 200% raise. It's all absurdity. I will be the person at the meetings who will demand accountability and transparency for all these issues. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Texera.
Yes, I'd like to see the, as Mr. Silva said, Alex said, the regrowth and then new construction as well. We definitely have a lot of buildings in the city, homes, that have been vacant. I think it'd be great to work with the building department to go in there and prior to demolition to see if it's worth rehabbing and try to take it in and make it affordable housing for some people, to get them off their feet and get them ready to go. I think that's what we should be looking into, because there's a ton of buildings that have been boarded up that will sit for 10, 15 years, and then further get worse in the state that they're in, to the point of knocking them down. So I think if we got them in earlier and then had some, give some incentives to people to purchase it at a lower rate, work with some people with Mike Deion and them to get some, what they call 203K loans, rehab loans, and rehab these places to make it look better in those areas and help these citizens out here.
Thank you. Mr. Tiff.
First of all, we have to look at what the city owns under buildings and stuff, and then we work with development to see if we could go partnership with them, because we can, we build another, it's all market rating and stuff, so we already have a building exists, so work with the development to see if we could get that, and then make an agreement and say, okay, you come into investing in the old building and rehab it, and the next certain years, you get a certain tax free or some.
Thank you. Ms. Deion.
Yeah, I'd like to stop by saying, for somebody to comment that every incumbent sitting in this table would automatically vote for 2.5% wasn't quite what was stated. I can say that I am the only incumbent sitting at this table right now who voted no for the budget. In terms of the tax rate, we did set the tax rate in this year at the lowest level for residents, and we did put the burden on the commercial properties. In terms of development, what Mr. Sylvia said is exactly correct. Nobody's going to say, don't develop the waterfront, and nobody's going to say, don't rehab where you can rehab. And I think that's probably a balance that we need to, that needs to occur. Right now, everything is market rate, market rate, market rate, no matter where the development is in the city. So I think rehab aimed at more affordable housing would be a good thing for our residents. The fact that the train is coming, even though it's been put off again, is the driving force behind what's happened and what's happening, and we can't stop that. But I think we can reach a balance, and hopefully we will develop our waterfront for the betterment of the city and what's going to help the taxpayers the most. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kilby.
Yes, thank you. The key word from the question is looming. The train's been looming for 30 years, and we've been dying for the train. I remember Lou Patine, rest in peace, he was the head of Serta, and he said, Brad, in our lifetime, we're never going to see that happen, never, never. So guess what? It's here now, and our city's in transition. There's no doubt about it. The city of Fall River is no longer on an island. So to answer the question, rehabilitation of property. And the Bank Street Armory is a recent vote, it's going to come up again, and it was a hard one, definitely a hard vote for me. And it tugged at my heartstrings, because I spent a lot of time at that armory as a child and attending spawning events and things. But I don't have a magic wand, no one does, right? So I just don't want to see that armory fall apart. I don't want to drive by in five or six years and shake my head and see the ceiling falling down and the windows not being fixed. The city has a bad reputation of rehabbing old properties. So we have a developer here who's giving, with a great reputation and his name on the line. So that's the reason for that vote. So rehabilitation, Council Haig, is the way I would go in terms of trying to increase our housing stock.
Thank you. Ms. Pereira.
First of all, I think that a lot of the older abandoned homes that you see around the city, those are all under the purview of Attorney Matt Thomas, because some of those homes, the individuals have passed away, or there wasn't a will, things need to be probated. People have had a home and then taken off to another country, left their home, so there's a lot of paperwork and red tape that has to be done before the city can do anything with that property. Yes, do I think that we need some affordable housing? I think we do. But, you know, my colleague brought up the Armory, so I just can't sit here and say nothing. I am totally against selling the Armory and putting market rate housing in there, because you talked about crime, you talked about violence. Where do we have for our youth to go? And that is the last historic building that the city of Fall River owns. Are we going to sell that, too? You could put the tourism office there, get the trolleys, I've been asking for trolleys for two years. How about the retirement board? Can they go there? There can be programs there for all ages, for all ages, and do something for the community. Kids play basketball in the summertime, what do they do in the wintertime? They're not outside as much. Get activities going there for the kids. And when you look at, Community Preservation will give $5 million to that project, you don't have to fix it in a year, take a couple of years to get it done, but start working on it and get it fixed. You know, do something for the community. That closed when Sam Sutter was man, nothing ever happened.
Thank you. Ms. Sadler.
In response to the question, I think we should better utilize our current housing stock. But I do welcome the opportunity to see new growth, new buildings. I'm not originally from Fall River, and so when I go into Boston and so many of the other towns, even surrounding towns, I look at the new buildings that are being erected, and then I come back to Fall River, and once upon a time, it was like old housing stock. I moved here from Quincy. Quincy, since I left 10 years ago, has recreated its downtown, recreated even the back streets from which I lived. Fall River can do the same, but without neglecting its current housing stock.
Thank you. Michael Sylvia has another question for our candidates, and it will be answered first by Linda Pereira.
What are your thoughts on the panhandling situation in Fall River? And do you think Mayor Coogan's panhandle ordinance does enough, goes too far, or is just right?
Okay, the panhandling, I've already put in a resolution about that, to have administration come down and talk to us about that. Here's the thing with panhandling. The ACOU comes down and says people have a right to be on corners, that's fine. But why is it that they can stand on a street corner and panhandle? Any individual can do that. But if you work for a dance group, Derfie cheerleaders, the firefighters, boots that they pick up, when we did the Veterans Wall, we collected money on street corners. We had to pay a permit. So why do some people have to pay a permit and other people don't? That's not fair. I think it should be that if you want to do this, you take out a permit, you can do it twice a year. That's it. That's what I believe. But the other issue is that I see a lot of people that are in encampments or people that are panhandling that have mental health issues, and this is a society that doesn't want to talk about that. That's an illness like any other illness. And with the closing of Paul Dever years ago and Taunton State, it's not fair. There are people who cannot survive on their own. They need some assistance. And I think that's a state issue, that the state needs to reopen some of those locations so people have a safe place to live, to eat, to sleep, because it's very sad. But no, I don't think it goes far enough. I think that there needs to be more. It needs to be tighter.
Just to be specific, Mayor Coogan's ordinance. There's a draft ordinance in front of the city council soon, right? It's not actually an ordinance, I just want to make sure.
It'll be there soon. But I've already argued with them about my feelings on that.
Just want to make sure everyone knows it's a draft, it's not an ordinance.
Thank you. Ms. Sadler.
So I watch Boston news. I love Boston, everything about it. And what I want to say is this, Fall River seems to be in this bubble where it thinks it is the only one that has a panhandling problem. You're not special, Fall River, is all I can say. This is everywhere. And so when I heard Boston say that its city council was going to offer up a resolution to address panhandling in tent encampments, I'm not opposed to Fall River doing the same, not at all. I'm not opposed.
Thank you. Mr. Silva.
Well, so as Gloria said, I think it is part of a larger problem beyond Fall River. I welcome Mayor Coogan's ordinance. I wonder if it will hold up in court, but I'm eager to see the decision. But kind of tying into what Gloria said, how it's a larger issue, economic development is key to this, and what I mentioned earlier about raising people out of poverty, I think that's a very positive way that we can try and solve the problem. I do want to address something from the last question, because Mr. Kilby, he just always kind of says that the city has a bad reputation for developing older buildings. This is all tied to economic development. I just almost find it laughable, because Mr. Kilby's been on the Committee on Real Estate for how many years? He actually personally oversaw the sale of the N.B. Bourdon School, which, as we all know, was, the contract went missing from City Hall. The bid itself shouldn't even have been valid, it was a half-page and meet any of the minimum criteria, didn't have any of the financial backing to acquire it up. And now that building got knocked down instead of, you know, being rehabbed into commercial development and housing, and it's a subsidized private parking lot, all paid for by the city. So I think we need to stop problems like that.
Thank you. Mr. Sylvia.
So I just think I heard proposed that, you know, drug-addicted people who, every time they shoot heroin or fentanyl, they're risking their life, they're going to go down to City Hall and get a permit and only panhandle twice per year. Like, that is not a realistic solution, right? That's never going to happen. That just shows how out of touch some of these things are that people have mentioned. Also, that society doesn't want to talk about, I've made untold videos, right? Talk about San Francisco by Michael Schellenberger. The politicians don't want to talk about it, that's another thing I said. I will be, they want to talk about the tourism director and all these silly wedge issues and have their little debates at the meetings, where I want to talk about drugs, homelessness, poverty, the failed schools. That's why people are under the influence at 2:00 in the afternoon. Obviously, you know, the system has failed them. I'm sure they have, you know, they don't have coping mechanisms, whatever it is, but it's never discussed. It's discussed the month prior to an election, and then it's, you'll never hear about it again for another 18 months. I don't think Boston is the example to hold up with mass and CAS and, you know, everything going on up there, it's even worse. We need to, like I said, it always goes back to, it's the schools, it's the economy. Once we fix those things, you'll see less people. But you can't have people high out of their mind, bent over at 2:00 in the afternoon. That's a medical emergency, you could PC those people, put them in protective custody. You can't settle and tolerate homeless camps, drug addicts everywhere. Sam Sutter and Coogan were talking about who had a better relationship with the homeless people. You need to stop it.
Thank you. Mr. Texera.
Yes, we do have a big panhandling issue, and it goes hand in hand with everybody wanting to make the city better, more business, more everything. I deal with a lot of people that come out of state to visit, and they say, oh my, look at this poor little city with all these people, panhandling. It is a big issue. I believe that one of the bigger issues is, as Mr. Silva said, they're high on the corners at 2:00 in the afternoon. If you were drunk in public, you'd get arrested. You know, these people, there's a time where, you know, compassion, and then we've got to have enforcement, too. You know, because if we keep letting it happen, it's just going to progressively get worse. And as we are now, we're seeing with all the encampments, and then there's more. As you're seeing the panhandlers, you're seeing where it started as one or two on one corner, is now is like a working shift. Every eight hours, there's a new batch there. So we do have issues that we've got to take care of, and we have to enforce it.
Thank you. Mr. Tiff.
Panhandling is just everywhere. But we do need to strengthen up, because, you know, every time when they are at the corner, either they throw trash, even though they have trash barrels there, they still throw them away, and that's literally in our city. So I would like to do is to keep a track on them, you know, make a track on them and see how many certain days that they're going to go there, and when they, the time they leave, that place is going to be good or not. And then you just issue, give a warning, a couple of warnings, and then you will work with a shelter to detain them, to make a, detain them, to make sure that, you know, that they don't do that again. Because if you don't do that, then it's just like everywhere you come, no matter what, how the nice, how the city is nice and beautiful, but people won't come and visit. what, how the nice, how the city is nice and beautiful, but people won't come and visit.
Thank you. Ms. Dionne.
Yeah, we all know that the courts deemed panhandling legal, that people have the right to panhandle if they choose to do so. On the 24th, we will have an ordinance meeting. The draft ordinance will be taken up at that meeting. I think no matter what, the end product, whatever it may be, will be determined if it's legal and if it's sustainable when, not if, when it is challenged in court. Just like the last time, the Fall River Police Department, they were arresting people, they were taking them off the corners. The situation went to court, it was determined, they didn't have the right to do that. So I believe the same thing will happen. We can't determine legality. We're not attorneys, we're not the AG, and we're not the courts. But somebody, somewhere along the line, will determine the legality of it. I say, if you don't like having panhandling in the city, if you don't want panhandlers, don't give them any money. If they don't get money and they don't profit, they're going to stop asking. Or for them food, or for them clothing. Tell them, hey, go to Burger King, I'll buy you a burger. See what they say. If they say, no, I'm all set, well, then we know they weren't asking for money for the right reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kilby.
Yes, thanks. Correct. Just, it's a cruel thing it may sound, stop giving. Panhandling is connected with our encampments. The ordinance is based on public safety. So, as we know, panhandling is a form of speech, and it's protected by the First Amendment. But you could put reasonable restrictions on the First Amendment based on public safety. So it's my understanding that if a panhandler is threatening public safety somehow, then you can do something about it. Good luck enforcing that. Okay, so it's a weak ordinance, you know, it's in ordinance, I don't serve in ordinance, but, and the enforcement's going to be the key. You remember New Bedford? They put jagged rocks on mediums. I mean, you can't do that. So it's an attempt, I think, at least to address it. And I enjoyed Ms. Sadler's comments on this issue. And Mr. Sylvia, I must say, the NB Boarden School, we did our due diligence, in my opinion, on that. And we got assurances from the developer that a different thing would happen. I'm not corporation counsel. We did our due diligence in terms of his proposal. He didn't follow up on a proposal. I'm not responsible for the school being torn down. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We're going to try to fit one more question in, and we're going to limit answers to 45 seconds. We're going to try to get, it's a little shorter time for each candidate. And the question will be asked by Pam Martin, and will be directed to Joshua Tixera.
Okay, I'll just make it really quick and scrap the other question. Moving in the city, walking, biking, the bike lanes that have been painted over the potholes, the sidewalks that have trees growing through them. I do worry about the elderly, and I also want to ask about the beeping intersection lights. Would they come on for folks who are visually impaired as well? I think we need to work to make this city a little bit more user-friendly for folks who do not have access to their own vehicle. How can we pay for that?
Mr. Tixera.
How can we pay for that? Okay, so, I mean, we'd have to really look at our whole DCM budget and take a look at that. And I agree 100%. The sidewalks, priority, definitely with people. We have a lot of handicap people, elderly, young, especially with the water main boxes above the sidewalk. And as we're having, a lot of the time, some of these subcontractors coming in, and they're not doing, they're not having a person behind them watching, making sure they're doing it the right way, is one of the issues. So then we have a lot of holes covering the sidewalks and indents. So I'd like to see the, in the DCM budget, I know now they have a sidewalk crew and an asphalt crew, so keep it in-house. I think the guys there would do better and keep it all in source, and just make sure it's within their budget.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Tiff.
I, my restaurant is around next to Long Curve, the Curve and Loft, and there's a lot of senior out there. You know, the sidewalks, they just fixed it, the sidewalks are cracked up, and there is no, there is no, there is no safety for them to go, so they have to go all the way out onto the street, just to cross. You know, like at the Loft Curve, like with all senior stuff, we should have a little bump before, like, before the crossing, the crossing street.
Thank you. Ms. Dionne.
Yeah, we do receive monies from the state, and we did receive money also from the county to do roads, do sidewalks. We do have vehicles that can, at the minimum, patch the potholes. It may not be repair, but patch is better than nothing. It does fill in the hole. And in terms of funding, if we didn't have $2 million in the budget that funds vacant positions, I'm sure we could utilize some of that money to make our sidewalks safer for the elderly and people walking on it. In terms of the streetlights, not streetlights, I'm sorry, the signals at the street, at the intersections, I'm sorry. We do have some that do do that, and I think they all should do it.
Thank you. Mr. Kilby.
Yeah, first of all, in terms of the flashing signs, I think it's a terrific thing, a terrific idea, especially in their schools. So I think that that's wonderful and should be increased, as Council Dionne stated. Secondly, we obviously received an infusion of oppa money over the last couple of years. And in my lifetime, I've never seen so many streets being repaired, so many sidewalks being repaired, in recent memory, anyway, for me. So now we have to continue that effort, and that's probably the dilemma when the oppa money runs out in a couple of years, to continue to work on our infrastructure in a very, very old city.
Thank you. Ms. Pereira.
Yeah, I have to agree. We've spent more money now on streets than what I see as a lot more speeding, believe it or not. But talking about the beeping lights, I put together the Commission on Disabilities because I had Danny Robelod come to me years ago and say, I don't feel that I'm represented in this community. And we put that commission together, and we did meet with Dennis Paselli, who chairs that. And we had a meeting about that, because Dennis, as a visually impaired individual, said that some of it is like chirping, so you think it's a bird. And the Commission on Disability gets all the money that's taken from handicap parking, when people park in a handicap spot. So there's money there, there's money for school zone safety around that area, and also community development, depending on what area. So there is some money to do that. But the DCM guys that do the sidewalk are doing a phenomenal job.
Thank you. Ms. Sadler.
With regards to the signals, the same grant funding requests that was requested to narrow our roads with bike paths that are not really required in the city of Fall River, grants should be sought for those signals. With regards to sidewalks and trees growing out of them, guess what? If we focused on following the city ordinances, where homeowners, property owners, even commercial owners started out with removing the weeds before they grow into trees, we could resolve some of the sidewalk issues that I have witnessed within the neighborhoods.
Thank you. Mr. Silva.
Hi. I think we should leverage our existing Chapter 90 funds that we receive every year from the state and try matching them as much as possible with federal and state grants, like the Complete Streets program, which I think Gloria kind of mentioned, is the one that makes the bike lanes part of the project, to try and increase all modes of transportation. I think that as the train station gets ready to open, that the last mile commute is something that needs to be addressed. That's what happened, that's known as the, how you get to the train station from your house, this bus stations, you know, pass, walking pass. I think those should be addressed now rather than later, to especially make sure everyone's accessible, everything's accessible.
Thank you. Mr. Sylvia.
So, real quick, Michelle is the only city councillor I'm going to vote for. I'm going to, if I get elected, I'm going to support her. But she did already allocate that $2 million to the low-paid people, not the, now we're going to do it to the sidewalks. But I still love you, Michelle. I say Ron Cabral, right? Famously, took a digger. I live in the Highlands, 5:00 AM, it's dark, and I took a digger, skinned myself up, so we have problems even there. My whole theme is we need to do more with less with what we have. The schools, again, $250 million, they can't buy scratch paper. It's about priorities. I've said before, I don't know if other people are running now, I filled potholes when I came home from Iraq. It's a very cheap thing to put asphalt in a hole. Government can't get it figured out, because there's too much corruption, there's too much people getting paid off. Again, Boomer lives out there. When I was running through the reservation, half marathons, try going through the reservation.
Thank you.
Try driving through that in Fall River.
Thank you. Thank you. Time now for our closing statements. Candidates will have 90 seconds each, and our first closing statement will be delivered by Jordan Sylvia.
Perfect, Keith. No prepared speech for me. Very happy to be here. Thank you, guys, for asking the questions, Mike, Pam, and Ray, Keith as well. Keith does the most, I know of, in Fall River to actually get some sort of messaging and platform out to people who want to fix the city. I'll even give the incumbents a little respect. You know, they put in a lot of time over 30 years. I don't think we're getting the results for what, you know, for what we're seeing. I think over that 30 years, the city has declined, right? I personally, I've lived the American dream, right? So I'm born into Maple Gardens, three generations. Obviously, me and my mom were living in the project when I was born. My grandmother lived there as well, right? So we just bought a pizza place on North Main Street. I get a lot of flack for living in the Highlands. We bought some real estate. I've lived the American dream. I see that being stolen from kids going forward in this city. Because the schools will steal your kids for 13 years, they won't teach them a syllable about how to make money, how to support themselves, how to be productive and successful, yet they'll give your kids books on, explaining to them that it's okay to rub their erection against their teacher. That's real books that are given to kids in class, right? And I know people and their parents are pissed off about it. There's too much to complain about. You're not going to, you're not going to resolve these things in 10 minutes, over 90. Follow me on Facebook, I'm very thankful, I've been running for 10 years. I will be the person, people give me a hard time also for being critical. I'll be the most critical, right? I'll hold the most people accountable. You do not see that. There's too much cronyism in friendship, these politicians.
Thank you.
Okay, so the 30 seconds. Vote for Jordan, please, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tixera.
Yes. How you doing? My name is Joshua Tixera, and I'd love your vote for city council. It's all about accountability and giving everybody a brighter future, and I believe I can do that and help the city move forward in the right direction through all of our phases in our city with public safety, through education, and the entire force of the city. So with that being said, I'd love your vote in November 7th to move this city forward to a brighter future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tiff.
Hi, my name is Ricky Tiff. I was, I moved here in 1999. I first stayed in Sunset Hill, the project, and then I got, brought my first house in 2014, started a family. My kids go public school. And then in 2021, I opened my first restaurant. So, and I always run, like, over this full time already. And why I keep running, because I have passion in, and I want to help moving the city forward as much as I can, and also helping people. So on November, on Tuesday, November 7, I humbly ask for your vote. And if you want to learn more about me, you can go on my Facebook, Ricky Tiff, City for Fall River councillor, or you could go voteforrickytiff.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dionne.
Yeah, I'd first like to thank Keith Tebow and FRC Media for holding this event. I'd like to thank the panelists for taking time to be here and ask us the questions, the timekeeper and the audio person. Thank you very much. With that said, I have always, I have never been afraid to ask the hard questions. I've always demanded accountability. I have fought for the taxpayers. I have great admiration for those who have put their trust in me. I thank them for voting for me and giving me the opportunity to serve them. I hope that will happen again on November 7. My name will appear number 11 on the ballot. I never make it on the top, I'm always in the middle or on the bottom, but at least I jumped up from 17 to space number 11 on the ballot in November. So I just hope that the voters find it in their hearts to give me another term. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kilby.
Thank you. Thank you, Bristol Community College and the panel, and Keith, my high school classmate. So I hope I have your vote, obviously, November 7. Been doing this for some time, and I will tell you honestly, all of us, if not most of us, but I think all of us, do this because we care. We care about the city we live in, and that's why I continue doing it. Council Pereira, I'm sure the same thing, and others. So I congratulate every single candidate who is brave enough to put their name out there on the ballot and expose themselves to the voters, because it's not, it's not an easy thing to do. So I think over the years, I've stood by my values, my core values, the way I was raised, the way I was brought up. And I think I'm an individual that votes his conscience. And I've been blessed to be elected all these years, and I ask for your vote of confidence once again. I believe I'm number 5 on the ballot, so I would really appreciate your vote, so I could continue to be a positive advocate for the city. And my style is to build relationships with people. If anybody knows me, that's how I operate as an elected official. So I thank you, and I hope everyone has a good night.
Thank you. Ms. Pereira.
Hi, serving as your city councillor, I've been able to do what I truly enjoy doing in life, and that's assisting people in need, working with people who care about our city, and being involved in projects that benefit our city. Constituent service is a large part of what I do as a city councillor. You know, taking care of the city's infrastructure, repairing streets, sidewalks, advocating and increasing public safety, repairing faulty streetlights, helping new businesses start up or establishing businesses to thrive and create jobs, like with the mattress company that I work diligently with. And I do scrutinize the city budget and finances to see where we can reduce spending. But being your city councillor has provided me with many opportunities to meet and work with so many good people who believe in Fall River. We love our city, and they are doing what they can to make good things happen in the city, being positive. There's great things to do. My husband Lou and I raised two daughters in Fall River, and through our marriage of 49 years, I have been a schoolteacher, associate worker, investigator for the district attorney's office, and your city councillor. But being your city councillor is something that I continue to do, because Fall River is my hometown. And I want to thank the people for electing me and re-electing me to be their city councillor. And once again, I respectfully ask for your vote. But please, get out there, vote. Vote for the people that you think care about the city. Because it affects one, and that's all.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Sadler.
Hi, I'm Gloria Sadler. As a proud homeowner in the Flint neighborhood of Fall River, I have a finger on the pulse of the city. I've personally observed the city's triumphs and obstacles, which have fueled my unwavering commitment for betterment for the city of Fall River. Collaborating with residents, mayors, police chiefs, and the DCM, I have played a role in eliminating much of the criminal behavior, prostitution, and drug-related activities that was prevalent in the Cass Street parking lot, the Jink Street area, and the Cass Street as well, excuse me. With your support, I'm confident that I can be a catalyst for positive change on the city council. I am ready to embark on this journey of progressive listening and taking on concerns and working diligently to translate them into effective changes within the city of Fall River. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Silva.
Hello. Fall River is at a key moment in its history. The train station is built, the waterfront is ready to grow, and people around the state are finally learning what many of us have already known, that Fall River is a city with much to offer. We must prepare for this fast approaching change with clear eyes, focusing on what we as a community want to see as, for the future of our home. Economic development, affordable housing, public safety, these are all decisions the city will need to make over the next few years, and they will affect generations to come. Fall River deserves a proactive city council, one that isn't afraid to dream big and one that doesn't settle for less. We need a city government with enough foresight to capitalize on the city's strengths, like its location, culture, history, and not squander them. As a volunteer, I've already uncovered serious issues in Fall River with contracts going missing from City Hall. I've helped the city receive $178,000 that otherwise wouldn't have received from examining old contracts. I've advocated against development that just doesn't make sense for Fall River, like the 14-story high-rise on the waterfront from an out-of-state developer. If I'm fortunate enough to be elected to the city council, you can expect more of the same from me.